Does the meeting come to order? Roll call, please.
Mayor Oberg.
Here.
Mayor Protam Lamerson.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Here.
Councilman Lozelle is absent excused. Councilwoman Orr.
Here.
Councilman Shiska.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilcox.
Here.
You have a quorum.
I want to thank everybody that decided to come out today and listen to this study session. We've got a pretty full agenda, so we'll start moving through it right away. Don't think I'll be taking any public comment today on anything on the study agenda, but the voting meeting, we will be allowing public comment as always. First item, please.
Item A: Presentation by the Ad Hoc Leadership Advisory Group concerning recommendations on the city's economic future.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Jeff Burt, Economic Initiatives. I'm here to introduce the Leadership Advisory Group and its recommendations to council. What I've put up here first on the screen for you, this is a map to give you a general focus of where the group really spent most of their time in discussion. They're somewhat generic, but downtown, it's about a third of a mile square from the courthouse square. And then in North Prescott, it's about a three-mile radius from the intersection of 89A and 89. So that's the general area that the recommendations have been presented to. Thank you. The Leadership Advisory Group was started in February. We began actually with contacting some private sector leaders in January. We ended up with a group of about 14 people who gave us a lot of time between February and now, about 10 months worth of work went into their discussions. The reason the group was created was to provide some private sector perspective on the city's economic future and identify recommendations to enhance that future. And as I mentioned, the geographic focus really came down to downtown and North Prescott. The group was very engaged. We didn't have a whole lot of wallflowers on this group. They were very forthcoming with their discussion and observations. We touched on a lot of economic development-related issues, and they are presented in the group's final report, which you have a copy of on your desk. There were a couple edits made since the original went into the council memo. The recommendations really consist of four goals with related action items. And one of the overall group consensus, if you will, was that given the resource limitations at the city, there was a feeling that the city and residents could benefit from a private sector leadership group that brings vision, resources, and action to bear on the city's economy going forward. The presentation that we have has several slides, but I think we'll be able to get through them fairly quickly. The presentations will actually be done by Dr. Frank Ayers, who the chairman or the chancellor of Embry-Riddle, who will kick off things. And then Ms. Connie can tell me. The president of Keswick Management will finish it up, and Dr. Ayers will lead us in that presentation. Dr. Ayers.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thanks for the opportunity to chat on behalf of our group. I think Jeff is right, we had no wallflowers in the group. And we have a good cross-section of education, business, former city political leadership, and others, and supported by a lot of other folks. I'm not sure how many of the group is here today.
Stand up, please, if you're a group member.
Great. Thank you all very much. And I was not the chair of the group, I'm simply the spokesperson. I'm used to my last name starting with A, and you end up in front of everything, so we'll go on with that. These are the four main items that we identified as priorities for the city. Build a business-friendly community, develop a better educated workforce, attract new businesses, people, and investment. And I'll talk about North Prescott, and Connie will talk about downtown, and then expand the city's housing mix. Build a business-friendly community. When you look at these four recommendations, I'd like to clarify upfront that when you make a recommendation like this as a group, people automatically think, "Well, it's a people issue." It never is. We have wonderful people who work for the city. We have wonderful people who serve in all capacities in the city. Usually, customer service and support of growth gets down to two things, culture and empowerment. And I think that's what this speaks to, is culture and empowerment. But I think, Michael, you have a great group of folks who you're learning, you're meeting right now and want to do great things. But I think the group as a whole saw several things. One was a concierge approach to how we guide new businesses through the process of becoming a business in Prescott. So you look at it from the business owner's point of view, maybe as opposed to the regulator's point of view. This doesn't mean that you sign everything off, no matter whether it's appropriate or not. This just means that you array the hurdles and the gates that a business leader has to go to to start a business here in such a way that they can go through the process fairly easily and smoothly. And that probably involves changing some job descriptions and changing processes and flows. And so that was the focus of the group. Create a series of customer service workshops. And I'll take a little bit of personal privilege there. I've done that before in businesses that I've run to the university. Generally, though, the customer service part of this falls in second to the overall culture and empowerment piece. So it's more about learning the new process and how things, how you move through from walking in saying, "I want to start a business," to getting through all the gates. So it's really training people on how to flow people through that, and training them on what the business owner's requirement is. A business owner generally has a lot of capital involved, they're time-sensitive, they have to get things moving. We need to understand that part, because they can fail simply because the time runs out before their money runs out. And, or vice versa, their money runs out before the time runs out. Reconfigure the city hall's floor plan related to planning, permitting, and economic development. I think some of that's already going on, and that's technology and the physical locations. And then communication. I think communication to business and residents that the customer experience, the new business owner's experience, is changing. And I think that communication needs to go with the change. If you just let the change happen, the word of mouth will get there, but it may not get to a business owner in California. You need to make sure the business owner in California knows about it, the business owner in Chicago knows about it, who wants to relocate to the city. So that is the sort of the governmental part of this process. And again, I would say one more time, this is not about the people we have working in the city. They are amazing, wonderful folks. Develop a better educated workforce. I probably can speak to that a little bit. We're blessed. I'm blessed to manage and run Embry-Riddle, Aaron Oakley University. We have an amazing Yavapai College, which does superb workforce training, especially out at Sea Tech at the airport, but across the entire college. We have growing partnership with NAU, and Rita Chang, the president up there, is a good friend. And the involvement of Northern Arizona in our educational culture is great. And of course, we just celebrated the 50th anniversary of Prescott College. So we're a city, fairly small city, with four major colleges and universities in town that amazingly enough also don't compete with each other. I think the focus of our thoughts was to leverage that strength, leverage that strength, and look at how we can develop a better educated workforce in the community. When you look at the high-tech industries that we think are appropriate for Prescott that don't use a lot of resources, especially maybe water and other things, but do develop a lot of intellectual property, design, that sort of thing, you end up needing highly educated young people in management, leadership, engineering, technical degrees, like you have at Embry-Riddle, and like you probably have at Northern Arizona, and the similar degree programs to what we do. But then you also need workforce training, which can be so well-done at Yavapai. And Penny Wells, the president of Yavapai, came and spoke to our group, reminded us how quick and flexible they are at turning on a dime to develop a leadership or a training program for workforce. I think working groups should be convened to identify ways for Prescott, or the Prescott and the Prescott region can be an emerging technology-based business center. And again, I think when you bring that group of people into town, you bring the college-educated 25 to 45, two-children couple, both working, who build up the schools, build up the community, build the tax base up, and grow the city. And they fill that sort of doughnut hole between the young people in our community and then the community's average age, which I guess is up in the 50s. It fills that hole in the center of the city that needs to be filled. And we think that, I know my good friend John Amos at the hospital always reminds me that when he's recruiting doctors, he likes to let them know of the educational opportunities in our city, because sometimes those from big cities are put off by coming to a city the size of Prescott. But when they see the educational opportunities here, they feel a lot more comfort in coming to work here. Well, I think we need to do that across the region so that a high-tech business owner or a high-tech corporation in California who wants to relocate part of their design business to Prescott feels that comfort level as well. And there's ways to do that. Establish an annual local higher talent fair for the Prescott University and College graduates. I've shared with many of you, one of our challenges is finding jobs in this city for our grad graduates. And I think I shared in this room a couple months ago that our chancellor's award winner two years ago, number-one graduate, wanted to live in town, married, two, three kids, family here, parents here, and just couldn't find a job in Prescott. So we need to flesh out those opportunities for people and also publicize them to the individuals involved. And work with the Prescott Business Committee to create a classroom-to-commerce internship program. And if you're not aware, the internship piece now is what all of higher education is doing. I'd say on the order of 65% to 70% of our students are involved in internships. And I think Prescott can benefit from that, across the spectrum of workforce to leadership and management internships. Attract new business people and investment. This would seem to be a pretty straightforward thing for the committee to think about, although I know there's some discussion about this back and forth. But I think we need to look at where technology is and how we bring them here. Embry-Riddle located the campus here in Prescott, Arizona, now almost 40 years ago. I'm not sure at the time we understood the aerospace crescent, but if you go from Seattle through LA, through Phoenix, through Texas, you find almost 85% to 90% of the aerospace companies in the United States. And they're spread out in a crescent all on the coast and across through Phoenix and down through Texas. We need to be reaching out to that group to tell them that Prescott, Arizona, is a great place for their workforce. You know, we have great schools, we have a great community, we have low crime, we have a decent or good cost of living, and we need to make sure they understand that. And that means we have to get a briefcase out and go see them. They're just not going to come here and decide to relocate here unless they know what we have. And I think the group agreed that, as a group of business people and educational leaders, we'd be glad to be a part of that getting on the road. Prepare an adopted incentive policy. I shared with you, last time I was here, I'm not going to get involved in your budget issues, I have my own. And if I never go to another budget meeting, I'll be a happy man, but I know I have to go to more. But I would say that incentives are how other communities, and the group is very aware, incentives are how other communities attract business. And I think it's a short-term, long-term issue. Do I take a short-term hit financially from an incentive point of view so that five years from now I have 300 to 500 people working here in town, and that boosts our economy? And it's that sort of vision piece where you look past what's going to happen next year into five years from now or 10 years from now. And I would share with you, our university runs on, we run on a seven-year plan. We're always looking seven years out in advance. We never look any shorter than that. And so we make investments on that long-term. Facilitate development of new retail centers, 89, 89A corridors. Obviously, there are a lot of homes approved in the area. We think that's where businesses locate, and commerce has to be a part of that as well. And attract amenities to North Prescott through good planning, marketing, public policy. I can tell you the growth in the area just to the south of our campus, where the dealerships are and where there's development, and McDonald's, which is my favorite place there, and all the others, which are my favorite places too. But I would just tell you that that's had a real impact on our campus life, because there's a lot more commerce and life there for our students and faculty and staff. And that needs to happen north of us as well. And increase airside land availability. We don't really have a lot of land. The city doesn't have a lot of land at the airport, and so that has to be thought through pretty carefully, where those businesses would be located. Let's see. Attract new business people and investment, and this is downtown, so I'm going to step away and let my colleague Connie speak to us about downtown. Connie?
You'll have to show me how to use this.
Just click right.
Good afternoon. Mayor, how are you? City council people? Great. Turn this down.
Yeah.
The short person in the room. This has been, first, I want to thank you, Mayor Oberg, for allowing me to serve on this group. I'm just going to deviate, just for one quick second, and just say that this has been an honor to serve on this group with these people. And I wanted to encourage all of you, the council people and you also, to tap into this resource. I was very impressed with every member of that group. They're a wealth of knowledge. These are the people that don't just talk about doing things, they actually put their money where their mouth is. And so I've been very encouraged, what I've heard, by all the people involved in this group at every facet, you know, the people that were involved in the city, involved in the development. It's been a real eye-opening experience for me, and thank you very much for allowing me to do that. As you all know, some of you that know me, I've been a big proponent of the revitalization of the downtown area. So I'm going to read these from A to E. Bring more housing and vitality to downtown. Support increased residential density on small lots to make redevelopment, especially for the above-street spaces, more feasible. I was involved in Phoenix, in the Encanto, kind of the revitalization of an area, a historic area in Phoenix called the Encanto District. And we did a lot of this through incentivizing the infill lots. We have a lot of, you know, blighted homes and blighted properties in the downtown area that I think are prime for revitalization. Not only will that increase the tax base, but I think it's going to change the environment to the downtown area. I already see it happening on my street, which is Washington. It's slowly redeveloping with the influx of California people moving here and wanting to develop, you know, live downtown in this historic area. B, the city and the private sector should partner to bring a new hotel and conference center to downtown. I think it's needed. We have many people that can't find places to stay on those special weekends. I own a few vacation rentals myself. I book for some of them a year and a half in advance to get people down here. I think if we had a little bit more offerings by way of the convention center and the hotel, we could really work on marketing the downtown area and keeping it busy Monday through Friday, not only just on the weekends. C, this is to create a case statement to document, validate, and market the downtown Prescott to the investor community. That's another one. I think that exactly using some of these, like the Buckston Company, to facilitate the attraction and retention of the businesses in the downtown area. What they would do is market it. I think we really need to change the image of the downtown Prescott again, because I think we've gotten kind of swept up into the drug rehab industry, and I think a lot of people have lost their focus with the revitalization of the downtown area because of, you know, the influx of the rehab homes. But we've done a lot of things through Palladini and some of the other people involved in the city to counteract that, so it would be really nice to maybe start a new marketing program for the downtown area. Organize an annual downtown forum to attract developers, investors, and businesses. Use community development tools to facilitate the attraction of new employers and investment. And encourage the private sector efforts focused on the facade cleanup and the revitalization. I think, again, many of the homes down here are owned by out-of-town people or maybe even some of the local people. And I think it's kind of a situation where people have kind of gone blind to some of the deterioration. The roads, for example, the sidewalks, the curbing, many places need to be redone. I think if we took an active effort in trying to take care of some of those things, we wouldn't probably look so tattered around the edges, and I'm quoting a few investors that I know that have come into the town and been willing to put money into it, but haven't actually seen much of an effort by way of the city being involved in revitalizing some of the high, you know, the high-attraction areas, such as the downtown area. Expand the city's housing mix was a big subject. It's been said many times that it's very expensive to live downtown, that we need some workforce housing. So work with the development community to broaden the city's home price mix in order to attract new labor force participants through projects like antelope crossings or using a community land trust approach, which is a very interesting concept as well. I urge all of you to look into that. It's worked in some other communities. It may be something that we could do up here, to keep the prices down a little bit in some areas. Research and develop a specific proposal utilizing a community land trust as another tool to providing workforce housing for new workforce entrants and emerging families. Conduct community forums to inform and educate the public on the use and benefit of the community land trust. The closing comments. The advisory group has focused on goals and actions that have a meaningful impact on the city's economic future. The recommendations embrace the need for public and private partnership between the city and the business community. The economic health of the city needs ongoing attention from the city, the residents, and the businesses. The Leadership Advisory Group asks you to receive these recommendations and look for opportunities to implement the presented goals and actions. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay. Any questions, comments from the council?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. Councilwoman Wilcox is first.
It's not going. I hit the button for a sorry, Billy.
Price is right now.
I'd like to say to the whole advisory group, thank you very much for your good work. This articulates very well what Prescott needs to do and creates a more specific vision than what we have in our general plan. It's almost the next step forward. I would like to see, Mr. City Manager, a workshop on community trusts, so a community land trust, so we can all understand what it can do and how it can be used to provide lower-cost housing.
Most definitely, we can make that happen.
Jeff, did you include in their packet the information on the community land trust? Because that might be some valuable information.
The piece that I gave you? No, I did not.
Yeah, that might be something we could give to all of them, yeah. Can I also say, having, I do live downtown, so I feel like I'm on ground zero. And another thing that came up in the advisory committee towards the end of the group that isn't on this list, actually, are, because we are in debt, we all know that, some of the things that we could do that actually don't cost a lot of money. And I think, you know, a big important part, and you know, you've all heard me talk about this, is code enforcement. If we could just get, you know, some of the blighted properties cleaned up and, you know, some of the sidewalks, maybe kind of identify the real, you know, the really bad areas and just work on those. I know it's going to be a long process, because a lot of this neglect has been let go for a long time, and I'm not sure some of the inhabitants of some of these homes can really afford to do everything to bring them up to code at once. I know it's a very expensive process, but if we slowly chip away with, you know, with that, I think that that would help a lot for the neighborhoods especially. Thank you.
You might as well stay up there, we've got a couple of questions here. Councilwoman Orr?
Oh, I just want to say thank you to the group. It's an amazing group of businessmen and women and educational leaders. And Connie, Dr. Ayers, did a nice job of presenting this great gift to Prescott, and it is a gift. And it's very timely, because we just had our third session this morning on strategic planning, and it's going to fit in nicely with our economic development. But thank you for all of your times. I mean, your time is money to all of you and those of you in the audience. We will make sure this just doesn't get shelved, so thank you.
Councilwoman Shiska?
Yes? Thank you, Mayor. Is this group going to continue functioning?
Well, we probably are not, but we have, several members have kind of expressed an interest in grouping outside of the city as sort of a private sector effort to create that concierge, you know, if we have a big businessperson that wants to come to the city and relocate here, we would like to have the option of meeting with those people and, you know, so-called selling Prescott as well, you know, something outside of what the city can do. And I know several members were very interested in doing that, because I think we all have a lot to offer. I mean, we are the people that are investing in the city, we believe in the city, not that the city, you know, workers do or do not, but I think it would be important to have another point of view and be able to shepherd these people through the city and show them some of the great attributes of the city.
So Mayor, is this an ongoing ad hoc committee?
Well, I think it was actually, it came out of Economic Initiatives, and I think it's something that maybe could be done quarterly, where they come back and kind of review the actions taken by the city and feel that we're moving in the right direction.
Mayor and Councilman Shiska, I think the short answer is it can be. When we originally envisioned this, this was to deliver a product, deliver something to the city that can be very useful in mapping, planning its future. But if there may be a continuing role, we'd be happy to carry that forward. But we didn't want the committee members to think there was an unending time limit or whatever to their time, because we did meet, well, we must have met, I think, 14 or 15 times over that period. So if there is an interest in carrying it forward, we'll be happy to help make that happen, and we'll go back to the people and ask them for their continuing time.
Yes, yes.
What I think the group would, I'm going out on a limb to express what reinforced what Connie said, I think the group has a predilection for action. So the group has presented recommendations and thoughts, certainly they won't all be adopted, but I think that now it's a time to move forward. As Connie said, I think all of us have expressed an interest in being ready on short notice to meet with visiting businesses, maybe even to travel, but to do the kind of things that need to be done to bring businesses to the community. And I think, you know, the kind of businesses we'd like to bring here are going to grow the community, are going to fill that hole in the center of the community that sort of exists right now, that 25 to 45 educated, you know, workforce and technology leadership kind of folks who live downtown and really enjoy the downtown, who live in the northern part of the city and do all those things. So I, as opposed to board meetings, maybe I think action is what people are looking for. Hope I said that right.
Well, and one of the funny things that came up in the group, and I was unaware of this, is that if we have somebody that comes to the city and has, you know, expressed an interest in opening a business, several of us, or even building a building, for example, a home, we're in that business, and we can help them, I think, navigate through the process in a different way than, you know, the city development department can. First of all, we can buy them a glass of wine. Jeff can't even do that. So take them to dinner, right, Jeff? That was something, you know, wine and dine them like they do in other big municipalities. And I don't think that Prescott, per se, has ever had a situation set up like that. But I think if, you know, for example, Ken, if Ken gets, Ken Mabarak gets a, you know, a big heavy hitter that comes in here and wants to build, you know, high-rise, it would be nice to be able to say, "Here, let me take you out for a steak dinner, and let's talk." But Jeff doesn't have the money to do that, so. Yeah, exactly. Code and Arches.
Well, you know, I do know that, being on the hospital board, that when the hospital recruits doctors, when the doctors come, they actually have other doctors, existing doctors in the community and their wives, take these people out and wine and dine them and really give them an insider's perspective on the community. So you guys could certainly be that.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
And Ken, can I ask you to step up to the mic for a minute?
Ken can afford the glass of wine.
I think you made an interesting comment the other day when you had somebody come in, and the fact that you were able to get sufficient support from the city, as well as, I think, Dr. Ayers and some other folks to meet with that, those people. Can you just explain that?
You're absolutely right. And first of all, there is no rumor to the high-rise conversation.
Good idea, yeah.
If there is, it'll be a three-story building. I had occasion about 10 days ago to bring a consultant into town, and I called our city. With five days' notice, we were able to meet with four department heads. And with five days' notice, we were also able to meet with three department heads from Embry-Riddle. from Embry-Riddle. And the fellow was so impressed that the response of this community was to listen, and he was here to find facts. He was on a fact-finding tour. But the reception was just wonderful. You've just got to be proud of a city that has that openness. And I think what it speaks to is all of us really are all probably more on the same page than not, that we need to do more in our community. It's not the Prescott of 1985 where you got 15, 18,000 people and you're doing your shopping here. We're doing shopping on the internet. We're going to school on the internet. So our design has changed dramatically, and the need right now for our communities, not just this city. I know we're going through our own stuff here with the economic incentives and whatnot, but we're part of a region, and regionalization is going to be the key for all of us. So I'm just glad that Prescott is as receptive as it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. And I agree, I think this is both a community business, educational, as well as a city effort to work together and try and move economic development forward.
You know, I think I may have messed this thing up real quick. I believe in the, under the expand the city's housing mix, it didn't forward, or I think I may have skipped over, and I'm not sure. Another suggestion on goal four, which was expand the city's housing mix, was the recently adopted 2015 Prescott General Plan noted there is a housing affordability gap. Jeff, did you want me to read that still?
It's fine.
Okay. I'm not sure why it didn't come up there, but gap in the city of Prescott, specifically the plan states there continues to be an inadequate supply of housing units in Prescott for households at or below the Prescott median income. The above goal seeks to address this challenging issue as housing costs have significant economic and social implications for a community. Highlighting the challenges of Prescott's limited housing mix is that for the current calendar year, the median sales price of a home in Prescott in 2016 is approximately $315,000, while the comparable figure for Prescott Valley is closer to $225, a difference of $90,000. The price differential between Prescott and Chino Valley is even greater with the Chino Valley 2016 median sales price of $185. This price difference among the communities represents a significant challenge to Prescott's ability to attract young families and young adults. This also has significant implications for the local workforce as the median age of Prescott's resident population is 55-plus years, while the same figure for Prescott Valley is 42 years. A lower median age will positively impact the community's appeal to companies seeking to attract or expand their workforce populations. To actively address the need for a broader housing mix in Prescott, the following actions were presented for consideration. Work with the private sector to identify the opportunities to broaden the home range in the city through projects like antelope crossing, I think I said that, and those that could be developed with a community trust, land trust tool. Research and develop, I think the rest of this is what I did say. So, anyway, with that, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Well, thank you. And I want to thank the committee that worked on this and came forward with these suggestions. It's greatly appreciated. As a matter of fact, we're working on the strategic plan right now, and one of our goals talks about economic development. So I expect that we'll start looking very closely at a lot of these recommendations and trying to build them into our strategic plan. So thank you very much. We'll move on to the next item.
Item B, Discussion of City of Prescott 2017 Legislative Agenda.
Mr. Chairman, Barry Erns, our legislative liaison, is here to discuss this. Barry, I'd turn it over to you.
Thank you. Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the council, for the record, Barry Erns, legislative consultant to the city of Prescott. You should have in your packet a 2017 draft legislative agenda, and I'm going to use that as the basis for my comments, and then be happy to answer any questions. First thing you'll see on there is the strategic plan priorities, and that's the four goals that we have been discussing in our three strategic planning sessions. Some of the language was, the draft of the lines revised as recently as two hours ago, but I think we will, it's a living document. I have always preached the fact that a strategic plan is an organic document, and it has to change as circumstances warrant it and as priorities warrant it. So based on those four generic goals of balanced budget, economic development, quality of life, and service-oriented culture, we can talk in terms of the guiding principles of our legislative agenda. Number one, obvious opposed preemption of local authority. Most of this is repetitious of what our legislative agenda was last year, although I would say as an aside, I think you will find a slight culture change down at the legislature this coming session as a result of what I generally expect to be the results of the election and, of course, the changes in leadership that have occurred. I think you will find Speaker Designee Messnard, should he win today and go on to be elected Speaker, and President Designee Steve Yarborough, who, assuming he wins today and he goes on to be elected President of the Senate, I think you will find them both to be very, very willing to work with you and a little bit less, shall we say, dogmatic as far as their strategy is concerned. At least, that's been my experience with the two gentlemen, and I think that will continue. Second item is preserve local funding. Obviously, we have been concerned about the bill that passed last year that could allow people to, as punishment against the city for doing things that they don't like, I'm saying this in the broadest terms possible, to punish us by taking away some of our shared revenues. There have been two attempts to do that so far. Both of them have not succeeded, and I think there's going to be some modification for that. In one case, you had a legislator from Maricopa County who was filing a claim against somebody in Navajo and Apache County, and the question was, don't you at least have to be a resident of the community you're complaining about? So I think we'll see some changes in that. Otherwise, the shared revenues and our support, recommended support and opposition regarding our revenue base and our ability to continue to provide revenues for the city services that are required pretty much remaining the same. I will tell you that you are likely to see another effort to make purchase of all contracting materials at the point of purchase, a complete replacement for the prime contracting tax, which we have been migrating towards for the last several years. You'll remember, three years ago, we changed that, and it made it worse. I can tell you, I represent some small subcontractors, and I will tell you that it's gotten more confusing and more convoluted. And I think you'll see an attempt to do that. I know that that's something that could cost the city some net revenues from the taxes in terms of the difference between contracting tax and point-of-purchase taxes, but I think we will work with the league of cities and towns to mitigate that to the best of our ability. At least, we'll try to get it migrated so that we can ease into that if that should be the case. Other state legislative objectives for this session. Obviously, we are working, it is one of the major objectives of the goal of balanced budget, and that is to address our unfunded liability and our PS, PRS obligations. The consensus appears to be that the bills that passed in 2016 and that the voters approved in May of this year should have taken care prospectively of the majority of the problem. Now, those of us, Prescott being one of the cities that has the largest percentage-wise unfunded liability, need to find methodologies to do that to that extent. We have already been reaching out to other communities to try to find some objectives. There was some legislation last year that would have allowed certain modifications of spending limits and so on to enable us to move forward with things. I know that Mayor Oberg is scheduled to meet with three of his colleagues in about two weeks to discuss some of these possibilities and some of our objectives and see how we can move the process. We will need some help, if not in actual cash, then at least in legislation and granting us some authority. So we'll see how that, how that all plays out. But that is obviously a very, very high priority. Obviously, also in the tier-three consolidation, that would be very, very helpful. Another item is, that we heard discussed earlier, it was in the previous presentations, and that with the partnerships necessary to fund the Prescott Municipal Airport enhancements. That's going to take a broad basis. We were commenting this morning that just the initial list of primary stakeholders was about 12 different groups, and I can see that growing to two or three times its size. It will require a lot of work, but obviously, the more people that can become involved in that, the more spread we can have the responsibility and the cost, and the better off we will be. We have contacted and talked a little bit with the Commerce Authority. There's some interest there, but we'll have to see how that results in whether it's actual financing or other types of assistance that they can provide. Lastly, in this list is water service and supply. There is one legislative request that we are doing, and that is, has to do with the continued drilling of new private exempt wells within the corporate limits of the city of Prescott and the service area that's by creating statutory authority and rulemaking that assures that the statutes that currently exist that authorize this are not misused to access exempt wells in areas where supply and connection is available and at a reasonable cost to the property owner. I've worked with groups in water issues, and as one of my clients would say, water knows no boundaries. It goes where it wants to go. And therefore, you have to be very cognizant. We're very, very lucky in the state of Arizona to have one of the finest groundwater management laws, and that was adopted 36 years ago. And yes, I was there and sat in on those meetings. I was working for a major utility at the time. They were part of a coalition, even though we didn't use the water, we wanted to make sure it was effective. We have to protect that. We have to protect the integrity of the Groundwater Management Act. And likewise, we have to protect the integrity of our surface water management. So when we see that the legislation that was passed may be allowing things that go a little bit further than we anticipated, we will be looking at that. I'll be working with the city attorney to come up with language that we can bring down and start to talk to our members. I would recommend that we'll probably want to talk to either Senator-elect Fan or one of the two House members to possibly lead the effort to do this, and of course, a couple of other legislators who are key water law experts down at the legislature. And with that, Mr. Mayor and members, I'd be happy to entertain questions.
Gorgeous comments from the council. Councilwoman Wilcox.
Barry, I have a comment and a question. Comment is that we've been paying a little over $2 a gallon for gas, which is pretty low in the last few decades. It wasn't just a few years ago that it was double that. And I think we're missing out on a huge opportunity to put ourselves on an equal plane with some of our surrounding states, where I visited and found that the gas per gallon is 50 cents to a dollar higher. So what I would like to see is some discussion and effort at looking at some kind of additional gas tax that floats and adjusts according to national or market prices. I know I'm mindful of what you said earlier about for every action, there's a reaction. But this is an opportunity, I think, that could be used as a discussion point or leverage point when we're talking with the legislature about not sweeping HERF funds away from local governments. Maybe it gives them a little piece of the frosting and a little piece of us, a piece of the frosting for local communities, just an idea. Yeah, there's a question about the use tax. Does that include a tax on internet purchases where a person is sitting at their home in Prescott, Arizona? And if they make a purchase from Prescott on the internet, would that purchase be subject of a use tax?
Currently, internet taxes are still under federal purview, and I think we're kind of stuck on that one. Maybe the new Congress will address that. I have my doubts. That's a tough one. But if I might go back to your gas tax and comment on that, there have been conversations about indexing the gas tax. Here's the pro. Had we indexed the gas tax, the last time gas was at $2 a gallon, would have been great, till about 18 months ago when the price of gas dropped through the bottom. And then it would have cost us on all the projects that we had budgeted for that would have been based on an indexed gas tax. That's not to say that indexing or tying to the implicit price deflator or something else might not be a good idea. Having said that, I will tell you, there are some legislators down there who are very interested in looking at the possibility of increasing the state gas tax. It hasn't been increased in, I believe, decades, if I'm correct. And because there have been some proposals, as a matter of fact, the County Supervisors' Association, I believe, voted last week to recommend that the vehicle license tax be increased to be able to be dedicated for the Department of Public Safety so that we would discontinue the practice of rating the HERF to pay for this Department of Public Safety. That passed the CSA Legislative Summit. Whether the legislature will buy off on something like that, I don't know. I will tell you, in all honesty, that there is still a rather significant anti-tax mentality down at the legislature. And I would also remind you that it takes a two-thirds vote of both houses, plus the governor's signature, to get any net increase in revenue. So it would have to be worded carefully enough so that it could be worked on. However, I would add that the gas tax and the needs of the municipalities and the counties and the state for improvements on their roads, as I was driving across Interstate 10 yesterday back from California, and watched the little crack on the glass by windshield get bigger and bigger and bigger, obviously, we need to do something. I think it will be discussed this year, and I think some modicum of rollback over the next couple of years in terms of sweeping the HERF and some modicum of increase in the gas tax is possible. Probable, don't know, but possible.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. Barry, thanks for being up again today. Thanks for working with the city. Thanks for being sensitive to the tax issues both here and down in Phoenix, keeping in mind at all times, Phoenix is bigger than Prescott. They have more legislators than Prescott, and we still need to work and have a good relationship with the very people that we look to, to help us get certain things. One of the things I'm very interested on is the ability of Prescott and the taxpayers in the city of Prescott to address our indebtedness to PSPRS when we finally know the number, if we'll ever know the number, and being able to go to the toolbox, which the toolbox is the citizens. We need to be able to ask them the right questions as to how we want to address this issue and where we can address this issue most effectively. And as discussed earlier today, it's not always raising taxes, but maybe broadening the base or the ability to take from more resources than just one. Hence, sales tax is not always the best thing when you're trying to pay off a huge bill. On the other hand, being able to leverage certain things with a bonding capability for a long-term payoff, such as 10 years, something of that nature, 13 million a year as a dedicated resource, it's $130 million. That's a legitimate thing to take to the voters when they know and understand this community will be saddled with an indebtedness for many years unless we get it taken care of sooner than later.
Mayor Protem Lamerson, that's correct. And I think what you've just articulated and what we discussed this morning, I think what we discussed both in the September meeting and the August meeting also, was the need to have as broad a toolbox of options for dealing with that as we possibly can have. And the decision ultimately is going to be made by the people. What you tee up to the people is going to depend on an ongoing level of communication that needs to start or should have already started with the folks to find out what their parameters are, what paradigm they're looking at, that they'll say, yes, we do agree it needs to be taken care of. Yes, we are willing to pay for it to be taken care of, but here are the priorities that we have in terms of the how. And I think what you just articulated was a set of menu items. And I think what you just articulated was a set of menu items from which you will have to make those decisions. But you are correct, there are several different ways of doing it, and until we have a comfort with what the people are willing to accept, I think we need to continue to observe and research and look at all of the different possibilities.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Ohr.
Barry, it's nice to have you with us today.
Thank you for coming. Thank you.
And I'd just like to offer myself, I'm sure many of our council would be willing to come down if I-17 is open, it's only an hour and a half away, and we'd be happy if you need us to go and partner with you and speaking to legislators, whatever we need to do to help you with what you're doing for Prescott, we're here.
Thank you for the offer, and you're all welcome anytime you want to wander down there with me to visit with your legislators, and I think it's always a good idea to keep in constant contact. I would suspect that you have a closer, better relationship with your individual legislators
Oh, absolutely.
than any of the legislators in Maricopa County have with their respective city councils, and that's just the nature of a community like Prescott, or Flagstaff, or the communities in Mojave County, and Yuma County, and so on and so forth. I would also quickly remind you that most clients of mine who come down to the legislature and undergo a day or two of following me around swear they'll never go back. But, you know, it's a lot of hurry-up-and-wait, but you are certainly always welcome. I have plenty of room at my office if you want to camp out there and make that your home base. And as you well know, I know Mayor Ilberg was down there at my request last year and testified, did a wonderful job, and was very helpful to Senator Lesko in finalizing the PSPRS. I know that Councilman Blair has been down there before, I suspect others of you have been too. Those are the ones I'm aware of. You're welcome anytime.
Councilman Sishka.
Thanks, Mayor. Barry, I'm glad you're on our side.
Thank you, sir.
Part of our effort down at the legislature is going to be to support efforts to pool Tier 3 PSPRS liability. What are chances of that being come out positive?
Mayor, Councilman Sishka, I believe that is a very good possibility. I remember when we were discussing it during the legislative session, when the bill was being worked on, that there was a consensus growing that having, you know, 87 bergs and hamlets each having their own didn't make a lot of sense, and yet having one statewide because of the dominance of a couple of communities did make a lot of sense. I suspect that that's got some legs to it. We'll have to see how that flushes out, but I think that's got some legs to it.
And do you think that could happen in this legislative session?
I think whatever's going to happen will happen in this legislative session. I think they're quite eager. They're moving on now to corp corrections officers pension plan. They've got to do some fixes to that because that's become a problem in some areas. And I think Senator Lesko, if she can do some tweaks to last year's bill to make it work even better, where there doesn't seem to be a lot of opposition, I think she'll try to do it.
So this would be actually a twig to last year's bill?
Yes, and it's in the area of the legislation that wouldn't have to go back to the people for a vote.
Okay, thank you.
Barry, I guess, listening to Councilwoman Wilcox's thoughts on the HERF and increasing the gas tax, I guess one of the problems I have, as long as the legislature continues to sweep the HERF funds to pay PSPRS for DPS, I'm not sure I want to see the, see an increase in the gas tax. Now, if, I do know that Noel Campbell, right now, is looking to propose an initiative this year, and I guess with some other legislators, to prevent sweeping of HERF funds in the future, and actually having that go out to the, to the cities and towns, and trying to find another source for providing PSPRS funding for DPS. Don't know how that one's going to go, but if that did happen, then I would be probably somewhat happy to see a small rise in the, in the gas tax.
I failed to mention, when I was commenting on Councilwoman Sishka's, Wilcox's discussion about the sales tax, I'm having to read all these names at the same time, it just drives me crazy, that any increase in the gas tax that is going to occur is going to probably wind up on a ballot. I do not see the legislature on its own, number one, passing on what would be a significant tax increase. You're talking about hundreds of millions and potentially billions of dollars of new tax revenue dedicated to highway user revenue funds. So that's number one. Number two, and thank you for reminding me of the legislative effort on HERF sweeps. Remember that the HERF constitutional provision was put in there before Prop 205, which says that the legislature can't overturn a public. I think that the compromise will likely emerge, where you'll have some prohibition against sweeps, some alternative funding of Department of Public Safety, and some increase in the state gas tax, whether indexed or not, and they'll put it all together as a package and put it on the ballot, whether it'll be a special election, tough to do, although there's, well, there's a way, as we found out last year, but it will likely be something that will be referred to the people, and I think that's probably the only way you can get that kind of a package passed.
Okay. Final question I got for you is, how do you see us improving the relationship of the cities and towns to the legislature? And what I'm looking at there is specifically that, it seems like many times the legislature in the last few years has gone in support of special interests against the cities and towns, and has really reduced our ability to govern and also to be able to provide essential services by reducing our tax base. So I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, you know, we had that discussion this morning that it looked like some time ago, you know, the cities and towns had a much better relationship with the legislature, not that they actually, you know, were a power above the legislature, but at least they seemed to work together. And it seems now it's more moved toward the legislatures supporting more special interests and trying to get certain, maybe votes, I don't know. So I think, you know, one thing I can see is, myself, as a mayor, is talking to the mayors and trying to get a collective support behind certain initiatives that we have, but I also think that also extends to the council members, both here and, you know, dealing with our regional council members and talking to them and getting their support, because I think that helps go to our state representatives and make some, make some more unified body for them to feel that they can go forward and push something at the legislature. Am I right on that, or do you think there's some other approach?
Mr. Mayor, you're 100% right. You, you seven members have the most important thing in your toolkit, and that is the bully pulpit. And I say that in the broadest sense of the term. You have the ability to convince and articulate to your constituents the importance of how close to governance they are when it comes to the city council, and that it's important that they relay to their legislators how important it is that the cities maintain their rights and maintain their abilities and their revenues, and I could go on and on and on with a laundry list of those things. Because when those things are relayed back to legislators, they listen. They do listen. I would suggest that right now, you've probably got a pretty darn good relationship with your, at least the two members who I believe will be continuing on, and there's a third that's running for an open seat. And I think part of that is because Senator-elect Fan was a city council mayor-type person. She gets it. Doug Coleman, who was also mayor of Apache Junction, very pro-cities, he gets it. And I think the more of those folks we work with to expand the knowledge of the legislature, a lot of it is communication, of you communicating with your constituents through your regular communications media and social media, and electronic media, and digital media, and everything else, to your constituents, the importance of making sure their legislators know how important the vitality of the city is, that will help. I think it's going to get a little better in 2017. Can't make any promises, but that would be my best guess now. But don't stop telling the people and reminding them to tell their legislators how important you folks are.
Okay, any other questions, comments from the council? Well, thank you, Barry.
Thank you for the honor of representing you. Thank you.
Next item.
Item C, presentation of draft city water management in calendar year 2017, alternative water allocation policy. Good afternoon, Mayor Ilberg and council members. I'm Leslie Grazer, City Water Resource Manager. I'm going to pull up a presentation quickly, and we can get started. Today's study session is a draft water management policy that will be presented. It has been prepared with foundational information that is generally unchanged during the 2017 to 2020 time period, yet Section 5 of the policy is intended to be updated yearly for purposes of alternative water volumes and policies associated with that volume of water. The draft policy was reviewed and discussed at the November 1 Council Water Issues Committee meeting, with a recommendation, subject to certain edits, for this study session. So the first slide here is just an outline for today, so we can know where we're moving with this topic today. A proposed timetable, a brief background of the existing policy, a brief review of the information that was provided to the committee in October and November, and then an introduction of the draft water policy. So this is the, the proposed adoption actions to be taken. As you can see, November 1 has already passed. That was discussed with the committee. It's, I think it's important to know, October, we spent, I think, almost two hours in committee, thank you, gentlemen, to work through over, I think, 24 slides that day, and once again, for foundational purposes, to understand why we do the things we do. The committee on November 1 looked through the policy, had comments, we made a few edits, and recommended that come towards this group in a study session. So from there, today is the study session, and I'll walk through the policy. November, excuse me, December 1, it would go back to the committee, allowing two weeks for any conversation we have today, or if you have anything within that timeframe that you think also needs to be looked at or addressed. It'll go back to committee for one more look, and make sure we have what we, we think is appropriate. And then, December 13, it would be brought back for a voting session. So we make the timetable of having a portfolio open in January. So a review of the existing policy. It was passed May 3 of 2016. It was the resolution that you see there, and as you recall, the city placed a temporary suspension on the allocation of supplies, and the reasoning behind that was that the council or the city had already made plans as to how much would be allocated for 2016. However, we saw many applications come in beyond the volume that was available. So the city took the time to look at the policy a little bit more, see if it could open up some volumes for use, and then it proceeded forward. So what that policy identified was the conditions for the temporary suspension, which I just refreshed your memories on. A short-term and long-term portfolio work project, so there were near-term things that needed to be addressed right away, and then there were other things that would take time for staff to compile the data, work through information, and several of those we're still working on. And I think your committee will remember from October that we went through those really carefully as to what those were, examples were, increasing the prices at Easy Street Water Station, adjusting how water is allocated from a .35 and a .25 to something different. Those are some of the longer-term efforts that need to be made. So the opening volume for the policy that's in place now was 479 acre feet. There were some contractual obligations to be met, I believe you'll recall those, and we had another item that was moved aside to address immediately, and that brought the general pool to 324 acre feet. And then it was further broken down into a form that was somewhat customary to the city, but we added one more category. So we had market at 125 acre feet, the workforce multifamily apartments at 100, and commercial at 99. So the volumes that are available as of November 1, after the last committee meeting, show that for residential purposes, the market category is at 23.15 acre feet, and workforce is at 1160. So there's been a lot of use. However, if you also recall, there was what we called the Exhibit A project. So there's still water, additional water being held for those who were caught up in the temporary suspension, allowing them a little more time to get their project together. So I'd like to review the October and November 2016 Council Water Issue Committee slides. However, I only selected eight of the 24, the most important ones, and we'll walk through those, just because it's important to have the foundation for what we're talking about today. This is a portfolio diagram that you see on a regular basis. It's broken down into groundwater, alternative water, and then the alternative water that's part of transportation. The committee, and for this policy, look at in particular, let me see if the pointer's working today. I think, not, okay. Okay, so from the portfolio diagram, these are the two categories right here, the treated effluent supplies for storage and recovery, and the surface water supplies. As it reads up here, we should probably take just a moment, what does alt-water mean? We throw this word around, alternative water, all the time, and what we're saying, it's the alternative to pumping the groundwater. The state said in 1998, there would be no more growth on groundwater, so communities, if you'd like to be a designated water provider, if you would like to continue to grow, you need to seek alternative water supplies. So these are two blocks that the city relies on, and we call them alternative supplies. And this is the, where the bulk of the city's activity has been for many years, well, based on policy. This is what is allocated out. Wanted to bring this to your attention again here, that's important to note that although the effluent that's reclaimed, this supply here, was identified at 3,694.98 in the 2009 DNO, the projections did not hold, and the block is closer to the 2005 volumes of 2,198 acre feet. So these reclaimed supplies were evaluated in 2015, and about 92 of that has already been made available in the portfolio. So we consider that as part of the volumes you're looking at today for potential placement or availability for allocation. And then the surface water supplies were not increased from the 2009 decision order. Okay, another breakdown that helps understand the checkbook, basically, of the city regarding water. Here again, the councilmen went through this, and I know it was a long, long meeting, and we're not going to get into this part of the portfolio, because it's not a portion that can be allocated by the, the city. This is where the bulk of the activity is, and this is where the discussion is today, is this alternative water in this category. This alternative water is the imported water, and this has not generally been under discussion, and it hasn't been opened up for placement into the, the policy or allocation at this time. So just to tighten this up a little bit, so we know what we're looking at, here again, this is the portion that we're looking at, and that is allocated by the city since 1999. Here again, it speaks that even though the 2009 decision order showed that there was almost a 1,500 acre foot block, we work with physical realities here, and we check what our plants are producing, and if they're not producing that, then we need to be cautious in how we continue to allocate. And this was just a little footnote here about, we were looking at this in 2006. So these slides are a little bit dated because we've been using them at committee level. So what is this block? This goes back to, this is the treated effluent recovery, recharge and recovery supplies, the surface water supplies, and that 92 that could be determined to be made available. That's the, the bulk volume there. And then recall, you know, why we're having this, I guess we can call it an issue, but overall, the portfolio is a big portfolio in this block. If big Chino water supplies are not moving into the community and the growth is not occurring, we're not going to be seeing the projections met on the effluent side. So where does this further sit? 1,800, let's say, is held in reservation, and those reservations include Chino Valley Irrigation District, vacant residentially zoned in city limits, pre-existing historical, and deep well. And these are broken down on this side. I'll probably emphasize the point a couple times, is that when we're talking about this very small pool within the portfolio right now, is one block of the portfolio. There's a lot of other activity that's happening that will allow for the continued activity in the city. So I would like to stress that. I think that was lost in the conversation this past year. The general pool. So, where we're at now, since 1999, 2,125 has been placed into contracts, some of it's held over in reservations, and this is the number we're really looking at. And we've been watching this number go down in this block for, gosh, six years now. But it's also, once again, important to know that the city has stretched its supplies, basically still relying on its 2005 DNO for an additional six, seven years. So, there has been good management along the way, I believe. I would like to show you, this is the last piece. I need to pull some notes, I apologize. And here, I would like to just restate again that the portfolio is large, and if we just take the upper block, here are the groundwater supplies in the portfolio are not budgeted by the city. However, this block contains supplies for final plat subdivisions, and they're currently unbuilt lots in a volume of approximately 750 acre-feet. There's also preliminary plats. A lot of you know the history on that. The city can seek additional groundwater supplies and allocation from the state, but all this happens outside of a council action. This is state law that does this. So, the volume sitting in that block, if we look at it both ways, because sometimes it's a little more helpful to do so, this 1,600, that is approximately 4,600 units, residential units. The next one is big Chino water supplies that are not either committed to the town of Prescott Valley or the deep well reservation are significant. So, you can see the future holds 3,500 acre-feet. If we convert that into units, that's about 9,800 units. The alternative water supplies from recovery and reclaimed surface water are held in reservation are also significant. Note that some of these reservations, such as CVID and the deep well ranch, are associated with contracts, and others are not. But that volume here again is 1,800, and that equates to about 5,200 units. So, if we sum those all up, we're looking, we're tracking very well with the general plan and the information that's been worked along, you know, through the years, as to what it looks like at build-out, and what the additional growth may look like based on the supplies the city has. So, here again, today, you're looking at policy that's looking at roughly 150 acre-feet that might be made available for new uses. And then it's also important to reflect that your overall portfolio is large, meaning that vacant lots within subdivisions have the water to build. That was probably the number-one question that came when the suspension went into effect. Everybody was concerned that they wouldn't be able to build on their lot. And I got the calls, we took, we said, "Are you in a subdivision?" "Yes." "What is your subdivision name?" "Okay." "And you haven't built on it yet?" "Yes." "Okay, you're covered on our groundwater supplies. This policy is not addressing your land or your interest at this time." So, I'd like to go, excuse me, go ahead and move forward, unless there's questions on that, and introduce the policy. Switch gears here for a moment, pull up another document. Okay. I left a copy of this document at your places up there, and I apologize, we couldn't get this to you sooner. We were running it through committee last week, and the timetable to get it into a packet is pretty tight. And we wanted to work on a few things related to recommendations we had from the committee. So, we'll start on page 1. I think it's important to note, this policy would only be six pages. However, with the 10 additional pages actually provide some of the foundation information that I spoke of earlier. It's one of the educational tools that the city has to have for either, for several different groups, I guess. The people who are looking to place, seek water, and have it placed in a contract for the elected body and for the general public. So, in this first paragraph, this introduction, I'll just read, this is the only one I think I'll read verbatim, is that while this water management policy references infrastructure and physical supplies, it is intended to serve as a water resource management document, providing information on the policies that guide water supply protection and use, physical, excuse me, basic physical supply information, alternative water allocation, how these are integrated to ensure healthy and stable water supplies for the community. Section 2, this is basically unchanged. This was, is the same as it has been in previous policies. Same with 2A, no significant changes. This is the portfolio diagram that helps explain what this document is for. Once again, it's the middle green block. This is generally where we're talking at this point with this document. This section was added, just to help to explain that Figure 2, as to what the groundwater is, the alternative water, and the alternative water for transportation and transportation. And city requirements are unchanged. So, I'd like to take just a brief pause here at the physical supplies. You know, we listen, we try to listen very carefully, not only to the public and the elected officials, but everywhere we are where water is being discussed. And we've been working on clearer tools to help convey how the city operates, its water, where it comes from, things of that nature. So, this is somewhat new, to have the physical supplies outlined here. This is a new, basic diagram that we'll be using more into the future to help explain why we send water to a recharge facility, why we take water off Watson and Willa Lakes to send it to a recharge facility, and what the effects are. And I'll just scroll through that, because we don't need to read the whole thing. Here in Section 4, so we've moved ahead again. Page 6. So, this, this section was added to improve the understanding that both the physical supplies and the legal documents, that is generally what I do. I have said this several times, I need to say it again. It's truly the Public Works Department that does the heavy lifting. If we really think about water at eight pounds per gallon, and moving it up almost 1,000 feet into the city, that's the heavy lifting. However, we do have to look at the water management side, these legal documents, and make sure we're integrating those well. And so, we put this section in to help understand that the city is doing these things, not only so that it's clear to us that we're doing these things, it's clear to the elected body we're doing these things, but also the community. So, we broke these down into several sections. So, there's water management and the general plan. So, every time that general plan is worked on, water resources are part of that. So, we're integrating, you know, beyond just the physical supplies, we're making sure we're in those documents that give the city the forward movement on how they can, might look into the future. Water management, conservation planning. It's amazing to look back into the history, and we couldn't put the full history in here. We had to pick select things that help understand where the cities come from. If we look at, this is a community from the 1860s, and you can go back into the minutes of this community and see that even in that time period, they were addressing water conservation and saying, "Okay, those on the even-number side of the street, you get to water on Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays, and then the other side of the street gets this, and one weekend a day, I guess it was just nobody," you know? So, it's very interesting to watch this, and it's important to see where we are at as a community. So, we've added in Figure 4, which shows the pumping. This is the blue bars on the graph, this is the city's pumping. This is the, the information we have to supply on a yearly basis to the state. And then the red line is the population. And so, you can see that as the population has increased, the pumping has actually decreased. Here again, the population numbers are based off of census and based off of the numbers that are used in city water and wastewater modeling.
Just so we can hear that one more time, Leslie, could you just say that again? While our population has increased, our water usage has decreased?
Yes, sir.
I would sure hope that gets in the media. Thank you.
Yes, sir. So, it's important to provide the community with graphics that are clear to read and straightforward. And so, we are hoping that we're starting to bring those things forward to this community, so they can see what that looks like. Communities are always going to have new people coming in, that's just the nature of things, and so it's important to keep working your messaging, so that people understand this is how we've lived in this area, and this is probably how we'll continue to live, a lot of it based on state laws and city policies. Here's another interesting one. There's a lot of discussion about gallons per capita per day, and how that usage is, what the community looks like. So, as you can see, there was higher, much higher, in 2002, and it's been trailing off. And that was by, you know, basically, there's a tier-rate structure. There was a lot of activity in 2006, and you can see that's where things started changing for the city. This graph has been updated for the gentlemen who've already seen it in the committee. I was able to add in 2015, because the letter from the state came in. And what it said is that we, they calculate a required gallons per capita per day, and that's 156 for the city, based on census and things of that nature. The city's actual, or the target that we hit was 115. So, that doesn't mean we're done, it means we have more to do. But this is an interesting one, to know how the city has worked, and it's not, when I say the city, I think I actually mean the community. We'll move on a little bit more through conservation. This is mostly showing the efforts of the community. I'm going to jump ahead and just momentarily skip 4C to get us down to 4D, which is page 11. And so, you know, it's not only, it's not only the end user who has to be looking at conservation, but it's the city's system itself. So, once again, we were very fortunate to have a talented team in Public Works who works across all departments to make sure that the system itself is also operating as it needs to, to reduce, you know, line breaks and things of that nature. Are we going to have line breaks? Yes, it's going to happen. We're an older community. That's the nature of mechanical things. They do break on you sometimes, and pipelines do break. But they also work into all their modeling as to what needs to come next to reduce those losses. We have to note where we've had non-metered uses. If we've had trucks going out for dust control, or if we've had flushing of a well, because it needed to have be maintenance, those things are noted. And once again, the Public Works Department's right there, making sure we have those things, and we keep in line with all state laws. So, it's a team effort. The city's got to make sure the system's right on top of where it needs to be, and then the community helps as an end user. Jumping back just briefly is the drought management, or water management drought planning. This is a requirement of the state. The city had in its codes dating back to, I think, of the 1990, 92, right here. How things would be handled, whether it's a resource level due to an equipment failure or to drought. And so, already within code, these things exist. The city has been fortunate, they haven't had to enact these, at least in the time that I've been here, and I don't, I don't recall in history what I've read, that it had been enacted at any time. They were able to get everything back online if it was an equipment issue. All right, we need to keep moving. So, the last one is assured water supply and infrastructure planning. The city maintains a water and wastewater model. It's updated on a regular basis. It'll be updated again in calendar year 2017. And here again, the city's decision order, the legal document that people look at and say, "That's the paper document on water that's integrated into this as well." So, let's move forward to the actual policy, and I'm going to jump down to page 14. And this is really where we're at for this coming year for this pool. I'll remind again that this is a limited quantity that's being proposed to the committee and council at this point. However, you know, we know from our records that there's going to be activity with, on our groundwater side of the portfolio, subdivisions that are already plotted, ready to go, and are filling in those vacant lots, pre-1998 groundwater subdivisions that can come in and continue to move through the process for us to go seek the groundwater allowance. But for this pool, we're down to a very small amount. The overall budget, I need to point this out probably, overall budget, 250 acre-feet. There'll be 100 acre-feet taken right off the bat to address a concern that was already in the previous policy, that brings it down to 150. We've simplified the budget to reflect residential and then a commercial pool. And I think your, your guests and the hard workers you had as your first presentation today, they reflect why we, we have this commercial pool set aside. We can have residential, but it has to go hand-in-hand with a commercial component, you know, if there's going to be large development that needs, not a significant amount of water, but water that is customary for that kind of need, because you need schools and places to eat, and shopping centers, and all those things, when you start building more into the airport area. Okay, I think we will jump back, and I'll try to work through these fairly quickly. I'll look at times, I know we're probably getting tight. Okay, so we've moved back to page 12. Policy 1 through 6 is generally the same. I would like to note that the legal department, as always, assisted us with some of the language to improve it. So, gentlemen, if the language does look a little bit different, the intent is there, it has not changed, it's just the wording has improved, I believe. So, 1 through 6 is all the same. Policy 5 is alternative water contracts that expire during calendar 2017 will not be amended to increase the number of lots or the volume of water. A one-time extension for one year may be requested by the applicant, if they would like to do that. The city really only has two contracts expiring this coming year, one for 14 acre-feet, another one for 79. One of them is in motion already, so it's probably not going to expire and return to the portfolio, and the other one will be subject to the contract holder. Policy 7 is related to alternative water. I should stop here. This is a slight change, and this is why I will read through this one. Alternative water will not be allocated to support lot splits occurring in subdivisions that have a groundwater allowance. Alternative water will only be allocated per policy to support lot splits occurring in vacant residentially zoned tracts identified in the associated reservation, and that's Category 3. Splits of unsubdivided lots without a groundwater or allocation not identified in the vacant residential may be supported by alternative water with connection to the city's sewer system. So, this read a little bit differently in your current policy, and we've found that as all communities have some unique situations. We had a couple folks that came in, and because of our policy, we're not going to be able to split. Well, I should back up. Land Development Code said they could split. We were saying that the water supply is not there for this, at this point. Everybody's given the opportunity to go seek irrigation grandfathered rights, that's a whole other story that I probably shouldn't even get into. But here again, if the city's supply, the city expended, the community expended a lot of money to acquire a water supply, there is, it's expensive to have those kind of things, and so if people go out and want to also do the same thing, they can seek irrigation grandfathered rights and continue on their process. So, slight, slight change there, that I wanted to bring to your attention. Let's move to policy 8. Alternative water shall not be allocated to uses that will not return 50% or more of wastewater to treatment plants. So, the thought behind this is that we know that this community, through state laws, has moved to a recharge and recovery stance, and if we're not doing that, and we're sending more water out than is coming back through the sewer, the wastewater treatment plants, we're, we're out of whack. We don't want to be doing that. We know that the state's stance is recharge and recovery, and that's what upholds the city's portfolio. So, we've added this in, and given examples, this generally hasn't changed. I don't think it's changed anyway, it's, it's still the process that we're looking at until there's probably code updates that will have to be across the board, which are significant when you start changing codes. They have to marry up, as I said, across the board. Okay, let's move to policy 9. Policy 9 through 13 are the same. There haven't been any changes to those since the last policy. That brings us to policy number 14. And with this one, let me take a brief moment to minimize this and pull up one more document. This is an element we didn't have at the committee level last week, and so I'm bringing it forward now. The policy 14 is related to applications for water service agreements to serve apartments shall not be accepted, and then there's further discussion on that. What you have in front of you now is, based on the past few years, basically 204 acre-feet have been put into contract for apartments totaling 940 units. We have a few things waiting in the wings that, per policy, can come in and complete their project. Let me look at one more note here, see if there's any other information that would be helpful. We do have pending, you'll see this in front of council here in another week or so, I believe. I'm sorry, it's actually December, you'll see it. Another 20-unit apartment complex will be coming forward. And within Exhibit A group, is the ones that were in the temporary holding pattern, we have one more applicant for 100 apartments that can come in. So, there's been a significant allocation of water to that So there's been a significant allocation of water to that type of housing. And let me finish now reading the actual policy. So the applications for water service agreements to serve apartments shall be accepted but not acted upon during the 2017 calendar year unless it is a project for which a portion of the needed water supplies have been allocated in an earlier contract or an Exhibit A project. So these people have already been working on their project, basically, or they were moving on it and maybe had to just take a breather for a moment and knew they were in Exhibit A. The city shall prepare a report assessing inventories and demands for apartments and other housing types within the city limits. Findings will be reported to the city council as input for calendar year 2018, alternative water allocation policy and budget. So we're still working on this one. You know, to be absolutely fair, the gentlemen on the committee were concerned about this one. We've worked on this policy statement a little bit more. We brought forward some of the information to assist with this. Per the legal department, we probably have a little more work to do on this one to make sure that it's the correct way we need to be stating these kind of things. I also think, again, it's interesting, your first speakers today also were looking at housing mixes. I don't think this is going to, we have a, I think the city has quite a conversation on this yet. So we've been terming things, workforce housing, for many years, and executing that has been challenging. So maybe through the strategic planning, the leadership group that presented today, through doing a updated housing stock study, we can see where that, I would call it a starter home, you know, that we're looking, I think the city's looking for a starter home type of construction that meets the needs of, you know, a three-bedroom with a backyard that families can start their lives in, that's affordable, generally. So that's policy 14. Let's see, 15. We did add this one. This is Exhibit A project. It seemed that there was a little bit open-ended in the last policy, so we put a firm expiration date for holding that water for projects. And then policies 16 and 17 have always been requirements within contracts, but I think it was important to actually put it into policy so that we knew that wells needed to be abandoned when you connect to the city, you need to connect to sewer. And it's clearly spelled out, so it's not a question by an applicant. With that, we do have a little bit more for reservations, but this has not changed since last, your last policy. The application process has not changed since last policy. So overall, that's an introduction to the draft policy with a timetable for potential adoption. And I know that's a lot to see in a study session right now, but if you have any questions or concerns, I'd be happy to try to address those. And in the next two weeks, if there's additional things that need to be worked on, we're happy to do that before we roll it back into the committee. Thank you.
Councilwoman Blair.
Thank you, Leslie. A lot of work goes into this stuff, and it's pretty boring at times, but I'll say somebody that's been on the Water Committee since 1998, that the policy has worked very well. And I can share with the people that are here watching on TV, often, City of Prescott gets chastised for having an over-fueled economy or too many houses being built. But if you go back and look at the amount of water that was available in 1998 to what's here today, we've had a managed growth of about 2%. And I don't think anybody out there can claim that that's over-fueled economy. So from my standpoint, one heck of a job, greatly, great done. It's a lot of hard work, and the policy's been working very well, so hopefully we'll continue to continue.
Ray Protim.
Thank you, thank you. I reflect upon some of the same comments Blair did. You've done a good job of presentation with regards to what we, you know, discussed. I was going to say the word argued about, but that's not really what I meant, discussed. Earlier, you made the revelation that while we're growing, we're consuming less water, and a lot of that has to do by policy with some of the things we've done over the last umpteen years. And in no way, as I said at the last water issues, would I choose to use codes and regulations to exclude certain types of housing from the ability to have water delivered. And I think we just heard in the earlier meeting why there needs to be a healthy mix of housing and availability of housing in every community for all kinds of housing, and the market will dictate a lot of that. It doesn't need to be regulations that preclude the free market from building apartments or anything else based on water. So to share that way you think, thank you for your presentation, Leslie. It reflects some of the conversation we had at the last meeting.
Councilman Chiskin.
Thank you, Mayor. Leslie, I really, really appreciate, I'm, you know, was new last year on the Water Issues Committee, and you have taken a very extremely confusing subject and made it halfway reasonable for me. Thank you very much. My question is, do you see, I'm looking at the City of Prescott gallons per capita per day, do you see that continuing to go down? And where do you think that we're going to end up?
Well, you know, I think it will continue to go down. Where that line is, I don't know. I think we need to have flexibility for this community because we have different needs. We have two-member households, we have households with four children and two adults, you know, who are doing tons of laundry because everybody's under the age of six. So I think we provide the flexibility to, for each, the community to approach conservation in the way they can, whether it's reduced turf outside. We've been pushing that program for a while now. We're going to continue to focus on outdoor watering. New technologies are going to come into play where, you know, the household appliances continue to use less. The education, we're working on ramping that up again. The city had a very successful program, I think in 2006, '07, and worked that program really hard. And it's time to start picking up and working the program hard again, but within the bounds of what we know now. You can see how significantly it looks different now. We're looking at a different GPCD line at this point, and potentially moving it down again, within reason. So I guess the short answer, which is what I need to give, is that yes, the GPCD will probably continue to go down, and we'll work on that as a community.
Okay, and new developments like Walden Ranch, with as efficient as they're going to be from an outside watering standpoint, what do you think that, do you think that they will continue to pull this down?
Yeah, they'll be part of the community and part of the GPCD calculation, so that will be helping bring it down as well, using, you know, all new fixtures in there, housing stock that has all international plumbing code requirement, low water use fixtures. Hopefully, the outdoor watering will be low, as they propose. Rainwater harvesting might offset it. Here again, we might not have a community, a full subdivision, that will be able to do that, but I'm sure they'll all work pretty hard on it. And we'll see what we learn from that and just keep moving the city into a better position on GPCD.
Thank you. And are we one of the most conservative communities in Arizona?
We're getting there. Visually, you can see it when you compare it to the metropolitan areas, some of the metropolitan areas in Phoenix. There's a striking difference as to what our outdoor areas look like versus what their outdoor areas look like. But I have to say that City of Payson, maybe they're actually still a town, Town of Payson, flagstaff have been very aggressive, but they were running up against the wall on water supplies. So you have to require much more stringent requirements to get your community through that. So hopefully, the city can maintain a stance of keeping a steady portfolio, which I think it's been doing, and then continue to find those opportunities to continue to conserve.
Thank you.
City manager probably relates obliquely to the water policy, but have we started to take a look at the people that we provide water to that have sewer in their area, that have not hooked up, and we're losing recharge credits?
Actually, just recently, Leslie and I spoke a little bit about this, and she was looking at the inventory of how many folks are out there to get our arms around how large of a problem it really is. So we'll get something back to you pretty soon.
If it helps, the city did run a not unsued study at one time, and the information came back from a study group. It was similar to that leadership group that you had here today. And so we can pull out that information and see how we can try to address the situation again. The situation came back from that group that it was too costly, but I think we can, once again, open up some new thinking and figure out how we can get the rest of the city, the pockets that aren't sewed, sewed, and make sure that all new connections that are receiving alternative water otherwise are also connected to city sewer, because our stance, as you know, is different by state law. We need to recharge and recover.
Well, I think the other thing, too, is some point here in the future, we probably need to take a look at working with our state legislators to decide if we can't develop some ideas for them to bring to the legislature on trying to control exempt wells and particularly people, you know, having, being off city water and having the authorization to go ahead and drill a well and utilize the well water. And the fact that ADWR just totally ignores that. So I think we need to start kind of pushing that button, too, and getting our legislature to work for us on that.
Barry's shaking his head, yes, that that's something we can try to get down to Phoenix and have them start talking about. Is that fair?
Yes, I think that one of the things that we actually had in there was to seek legislation on that issue. First step would probably be to go to the Arizona Department of Water Resources and see if they're willing to do it. And I'd be more than happy to facilitate a meeting with Tom Bouchotsky to see if he's willing to do that.
If I can, Mayor, I, you know, we listened to dialogue for over the many years I've been in here, and one of the major, major contributing factors, they said, of us reaching safe field was to get all these unsued areas on sewer. And in North Prescott, which is Prescott Heights, there's 460 lots that are sitting there unsued that are at the headwaters of Willow Lake that need to be addressed. But also, it needs to be addressed based upon listening to John McCain yesterday telling us, one of the big things in this state is water, water, water. So the more that we can reuse, recharge, re-clean, and put back is a huge thing for us in the future, and the state should be very concerned about that.
I totally agree.
Mayor, go ahead.
Okay, Steve, 100% correct. You've got, you've got a sitting legislator going back down, hopefully, who's concerned with water. You've got McCain, hopefully, concerned with water. You've got a new legislator, maybe, that's concerned with water. All of them running were concerned with water. This is a huge issue. All the folks we're talking about live right here in River City, and this needs to be, and Barry heard it loud and clear, it's one of our legislative agendas to work with the legislators down there through our lobbyists to get some stuff up here that we need to address our water issue.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you, Leslie. Next item.
Item D, discussion of proposal to allocate $25,000 to the development of the pickleball
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for providing us with time. We know you've got pretty weighty issues to consider, so we will be brief. And as you can see, very few slides there. I'd like to let you know that we have, joining me today, a number of people from the Prescott Pickleball Association. I wonder if you might stand up? This is just a couple. We, it was short notice, so we couldn't get the whole group together. That would be a lot of people. It would overflow your, thank you. Amongst those people are volunteers, our USAPA ambassadors, and then Rita Kavanaugh, the vice president, will you wave? And Randy Price, who is our construction chairperson. We're here today to help you, give you, provide you with an update. We met last April, and a lot's happened, and we want to provide you with some information that might help you to consider the proposal that is before you. So what has happened is you all agreed to partner with us in a public-private partnership. And just a week and a half ago, we went to the county, and they also unanimously agreed to partner with us. So we are thrilled to report that both county and city are now on board for this public-private Progress to date, as we had reported the last time, we have partnered with the Arizona Community Foundation. We have a Prescott Pickleball Fund. We have, in five months, raised $91,000 with another 20 pledged. Much of this money has come from individuals, although I must tell you, I was very interested in listening to your community development, because there were also four of your developers who had contributed, and one of them was Dave Grounds, Antelope Crossing. And when, when Dave said he would contribute the $10,000, I said, "Well, gosh almighty, do you know where that is in relationship to Antelope Crossing?" And he said, "I'm not quite sure I know what you mean." I said, "Take a ride down, because when you're developing in the northern part of this city, Pioneer Park is just awesome." And the more things that we can put into Pioneer Park, the more beautiful the northern part of the city becomes. We have been working very diligently with your city engineer, and most importantly, Joe Beans from Parks and Recreation. We kind of run up, ran up against a problem because our initial bids for engineering were astronomical. And your city engineer said, "Well, let's see if we can't give you a hand." And so he made a few phone calls, and we were able to get Kim Lee Horn, a new engineering group in that had just relocated or opened an office here, to essentially donate. So we're looking for in-kind donations, and we've received some really good progress there. When we first came together and we did this proposal, we asked you to approve pickleball courts. Let me tell you, it is so much more than pickleball courts. Without the courts, our people, our volunteers, Malia, will you please raise, yeah, yeah. These people have gone out and started programs. And we are in the planning stages with Boys to Men, Yavapai, Big Brothers, Big Sister, and we've even had some initial discussions with the Prescott Unified School District. So those are programs that are in the planning stage, and I was talking to Travis Rushing just yesterday, and he said, "I can't wait for the courts so that we can start a program for Boys to Men." Already, we have in place programs where we go out to the Veterans Hospital, Malia is part of that, the Yavapai Youth Detection, Yavapai County Youth Detention Center. The kids out there love it when we come on Sundays to play. I don't go, but some of the volunteers do. And Boys and Girls Club as well. And that's just to name a few. So without courts, we've started to have an impact on our community, and we're very excited about that. There's one thing that's very unique about pickleball people, and that's, that's that we actually do a lot in the community. The last time we were here, we didn't have a rendering, and there you can see, on commerce, we have two, what we call quads. There are four courts each. It's going to be beautiful. And this is phase one of our project. We do expect that you're going to be begging us to come back and build some more courts. Pickleball, I don't know if you've had a chance to watch TV and see the national pickleball tournaments that we had. There are, it's amazing how much the tournaments have an impact on the communities that they're in. And we know that our pickleball courts will immediately be scheduled. In fact, we've been talking to the pickleballtournaments.com, Margot Christensen with Tourism to start to think about programs that we can start up. That's the aerial view of where these courts are going to reside, right across the street from Kayla's hands. from Kayla's Hands. So, why should you invest in this at this point in time? Well, one thing is, we were just a ragtag group of people when we came in and hadn't really raised much money, but now we're halfway there. And I think the essence of this is to get these courts built quickly. It's just a slab of concrete with some fencing, so it's not rocket science. And I can't overemphasize this. The revenue to the city, the tournaments will bring in money. There are literally thousands of examples of this across the United States right now. And in your packet, there is a little article about a town that brought in $215,000 with tournaments in 2015. So, tournaments will bring money. And I know that you're going to have a question about, "Well, who the heck is going to do this? Is poor Joe Baines going to be saddled with this?" And I can assure you, he will not. We are, we are already forming committees and people who want to start planning your tournaments. And that is the norm nationally, by the way. So, programs and tournaments also can be scheduled during shoulder time. I hear from all of you how important it is to fill up the hotel rooms Tuesday through Thursday. And we've had this conversation with Margot. She's already coming up with ideas for maybe a round robin event in the summer to bring people into Prescott to play pickleball. I can say that, right? And they'll come. When we go down to tournaments, they're asking, they see the, they see the articles, the courier's been wonderful, giving us some press. And so, we are thrilled that there are a lot of people that are looking to Prescott to have this happen as quickly as possible. Also, we will work with Parks and Recs. We are already working with Joe, and we've ready to work with his team. We are not a fly-by-night organization. We are here to stay, right, guys? Pickleball is self-sustaining. We, we will generate money, and that money will, will help to pay for the courts, to pay for costs associated with pickleball. So, I know a lot of you are very interested in the fact that tourists come to Prescott for our open space, our hiking, our biking. It's such a beautiful place. They will come for pickleball. I was thinking, okay, how do we, how do we talk about this in just one word? And so, the, one of the pictures there is a 5-0 nationally-ranked player who's sitting, where are you? JT? JT. Who played a tournament with a 10-year-old boy. It's a multi-generational activity. And then, Malia, where are you? That's, she won a tournament with her daughter. So, it's a healthy thing. It's multi-generational. It's a community event. It's open to the public. So, as you're developing that northern area, these people are going to have a beautiful facility that they can go to. And guess what? It's free. It will generate revenue, and it's a very positive thing for the city because you have so many weighty things to deal with. This one is a no-brainer. It's going to be nothing but good for, for the city of Prescott. So, that's the picture of our future site. Do you have any questions?
Counselor Wilcox.
Again, you're first.
Thank you. Question of probably city manager or city attorney, who will own and maintain the courts? And do we have an agreement with the Pickleball Association about the joint funding and joint responsibilities?
We've met with the Pickleball Association, and we've verbally discussed the terms of an agreement between the parties. I don't know if we have one formalized yet, but Joe could allude to what we have drafted.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Council. Just as with Kayla's Hands and Ziegler Field, as well as the dog park, what we'll do is, after the courts are built, they'll be donated to the city. There'll be a donation agreement with a memorandum of owner standing that addresses a lot of the issues.
Great, okay. I'm all in favor of it. I think it's fantastic, really fantastic. Although, I do have to take issue with the city attorney's interpretation of the use of the bed tax.
Thank you.
I think we wouldn't have pickleball if it hadn't been for new growth in Prescott.
Impact funds.
Impact funds. We should be using impact funds. Hold it. I get to have my say first. It's people like Billy, who came to this community not too long ago, and many others like her, who brought the whole idea of pickleball. When I moved here five years ago, I hadn't even heard of it. I think it's directly related to new growth, not just, you know, around Pioneer Park, but new growth in the city as a whole. To me, it's appropriate to use bed tax money. Now, John, you can have your say.
Well, first of all, I think you're mixing bed tax money and impact fees.
Oh, I'm sorry, impact fees. That's what I meant.
Because in my view, the, if we spent half, or half of our contribution to the Kayla's Playground was bed tax money, this, I think, is appropriate. Bed tax money would be an appropriate use for part or all of this funding, because it's both tourism-related and recreation-related. The problem with using impact fees is that, is that building these types of facilities, I don't believe are in anywhere in our parks plan, and that's, that's the basis on which we spend our impact fees. So, you know, question is, is whether you can go back and sort of redo your parks master plan, kind of retroactively to contemplate it. It's a little bit of a shoehorning issue, but, but there's nothing in it that when, when the, when the development impact fees were collected from the new housing that was built, there's nothing in the, in the plan at that time, there's no basis for the collection of those development impact fees that would support spending it on pickleball courts. Just like it wasn't, just like you can state, or that was stated, that the Kayla's Playground is a function of growth of more families moving here, but again, it wasn't contemplated at the time the fees were collected.
Does the law require that much specificity?
I think it does. I mean, it, it has to benefit, you know, there has to be a benefit, there has to be some benefit that goes to the people who paid the impact fee. And, and with all due respect, you can't just say it is and therefore it is. It has to be some, 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 some analysis that was done at the time.
At the time of?
The fees, when the, when either the fees were established or entered or collected.
Okay.
Counselor Menore.
Yeah, I'd like to make a couple of comments, but first, a question, John. So, what if we rewrote that master plan? I'm not trying to, with a shoehorn, I'm saying, we now have, when was that master plan actually written?
2007.
Okay. What if we rewrote that plan and pickleball became, I'm, I'm thinking down the road.
Plans are plans that are all subject to change, and I think we're, we're talking about a moving target here.
But, you know, again, it's not, it's the, you have to go back and look at what the basis of the fees, what was, why did we charge the development impact fee for recreation when we charged it? That's the fundamental question. What, what were, what were the justifications for charging a recreational portion of the impact fee?
Putting impact on recreation services in the city of Prescott.
I don't know, is that it? Because that's what, that's what the plan would have to have established. I, I don't think the, the plan has to, has to use the word pickle or ball or both.
Well, the problem I have is, we have two guys here and you there, and a new city manager, and this has come up 12 times since I've been on this.
I can't recreate history, Councilman. I mean, I just can't.
I, I understand that.
The basis for the fees.
But I keep hearing, I think, I think, I think, has anybody read the damn plan to figure out what it actually says?
Well, we did the study for the impact fees that were in place at the time, so I am familiar with what is in that impact fee study. Impact fee study in the law at the time that that fee was done, and case law at that time was very clear that you cannot saddle a new service level in a community on new development. You can only use development impact fees to grow existing service levels to meet that additional capacity need of that new development. So, we don't have a swimming pool. We can't add a swimming pool with impact fees. We didn't have pickleball courts. We can't add that service level to everybody in the community, putting that solely on the backs of the new development. We can expand parks because we had parks.
Mark, I was going to ask a question. Is there anything in that document that talks about active adult populations? Because even four or five years ago, the nature of our growth has been this age bracket of people who are now being more involved in recreation services than they were historically. Do you follow what I'm saying?
Yeah, I am. The, the study that we did back in, I can't even remember when, like 2005, was based on the inventory of recreational amenities in the community at the time, and extrapolated on that out to the growth component.
But, you know, I hate to butt in, but you use the word to expand an already-existing park. That has to do with elements within the park. So, you know, to me, to add a, a park for kids, an element of the park, or a pickleball facility in that park, it would still fall under amenities that we need in the park because of people moving into this community demanding those services. That was the whole intention of the, of the thing. And now, all we're going to do is hang our hat on one thing, on a master plan, that it has to be very specific to a soccer field or a ball field. I don't believe that was the intention of it at all. You just said a park, so let's add the elements into that park. Sorry. I just disagree wholeheartedly.
I just think that this is more of a 10,000-foot, it would be great to use the impact fees to address this issue, but what I'm saying, too, is we, as a community, are saying that recreation services has changed. It's not just kid-focused anymore. It's, Peg's not a kid, I'm not going to say.
Thanks, Mike.
She's got the spirit of a child. I appreciate that. But as our needs in terms of rec have shifted, it would be nice to revisit this plan at some point, if we could, to expand it to include the population we've actually attracted.
I would like to see that.
Shuffleboard for crying out loud.
Or bocce or any, any of those types of things.
Bocce, too.
Well, if I could finish my comments, and I, I would like to see us do that, Michael. I'd like to see us, see, see how it is, because I've been listening now for a couple of years, and it seems like this issue, like Steve has said, has come up so many times. We've got that money sitting there. Why can we not use it for these purposes? I, I'm saying thank you a lot today, but I will tell you from the bottom of my heart, I think these, thank the picklepeople for what they do, because they are amazing and how giving they are to our community and our children. This is not about a bunch of fogies out there playing a game. This is about giving back to community, and, and I so appreciate what you are doing because such a positive, such a positive impact for Prescott. One of the things I love about this game, I won't go in for long, I could talk for an hour, Fox won't do that, is the healthy aspect of it. And I, you guys know I wear Fitbit. I add at least 6,000 steps every time I play pickleball. Because you play for two hours, it's addictive, you don't want to stop, you know, "Please don't turn the lights off, let's keep playing." The other thing about this game that's so great for our families is that it's affordable. I don't recognize you guys out there because you're all dressed up. Usually, we go to pickleball in tennis shoes, a T-shirt, and a pair of shorts. No special outfits, no special, the equipment is a paddle. We are going to provide paddles for our families that go play pickleball at Prescott Pickleball Courts. It's a very affordable game. It's something intergenerational. I play with Beck Hughes 84 and Jimmy the Net, who is 90, and Gloria, who is, I don't know how, I started with Gloria when she was eight, I don't know where she is now, but it's such a great thing for our community. So, I appreciate what you're doing, what you've brought to this community, and, and I appreciate you, Mayor, very much in supporting this effort, so, thank you. Peg, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Chisca.
Yeah, you know, Peg mentioned something, and she said that the results of pickleball, economic results, would pay for the courts. Well, where are most of these funds going to go? I mean, where are they coming from? They're going to go into, they're going to go into staying at hotels. They're going to go into the food that they buy. Well, that all goes into TAC. And so, from my standpoint, that money would be repaid to TAC from whatever investment TAC made in this situation. So, from my standpoint, I think that, that, you know, I don't want to see just half of it come from TAC. I think we're, we're arguing, we're beating a dead horse. I think that we ought to determine where this is coming from. The return on investment is in TAC. And so, I think it ought to come from TAC.
And TAC, for those that don't know, is Tourism Advisory Committee, it's bed tax, basically.
Mayor Protem.
I like the word flexibility. I heard it several times a day. Barry, are you listening to this stuff? Right? This is what happens when government farther up the food chain hornswaggles a community who's a chartered community from using the money we generated to benefit our residents. Okay, I agree with Blair, I agree with Billy, I agree with Chisca. Just get the thing, thing going, and let's stop it. The money's got to come out of bed tax. Take it out of bed tax. John, let's be a little more flexible in rewriting the deal. Bring it back, we'll fix it to where we don't run into this again.
Barry, do you want to step up for a second?
You should have left a long time ago, Barry. I don't run away.
What do you think the appetite is at the legislature to relook at the restrictive means they've put on the?
Torres, the bed tax?
No, the impact fees.
Once you open up impact fees, you are opening up the proverbial can of worms. It's such a, it was controversial when it first came up. It's been controversial ever since. I think that you, unless you could get a broad coalition of folks who have a whole bunch of different things, I mean, if they're going to refine the impact fees anyway, and we can work with some folks to get an amendment in there that would do a, just a minor carve-out that I'm sure the city attorney could figure out the language for to be able to use it, that's fine. I would suggest that to open it up for this, it probably would not succeed. On the other hand, you know, the, the bed tax, I don't know what your code says about what is appropriate for it, but from the conversation that I've heard, you, you might be able to do it and worry about it later.
Okay, thanks, Barry. John, I guess one of the things we could look at is, you know, we do have the trail system out there, so if we wanted to put a toilet in out there that would support both the trail system and the pickleball, would that be something that you could use impact fees for?
I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
Rewriting the master plan is something the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee can do, inclusive of all recreation activities, period. I mean, I don't know why we're picking at you.
And that's half the, half the battle. The other half is, what was the basis under which we, the city, charged the recreation portion of the impact fee?
I, you know, Mark said he's read it, and I have not read it, but based upon being around.
And that's going to be, that's going to be the challenge, is?
My understanding, it was the same way with the impact fees on Parks and Recreation and Library, as well as the fire and the police. You have to use those funds for what they were collected for. The impact fees for fire and police were, from my understanding, essentially used to offset the cost of new people coming in and demanding the services. We got people coming in demanding services in Parks and Recreation, and we can't figure out how to get into that vault?
You know, I, I guess, you know, the, the issue's going to be, we can, we can, you know, bootstrap ourselves into taking $25,000 out of the impact fees, but I will tell you, it's, it's, it's a risk. It's a risk that's going to get challenged.
So, what happens? They sue us? Okay.
And then, and then, then you may be under the obligation to, if you lose, that these monies need to be refunded. I mean, we have that problem in the statute now, remember, that, that there are misspending, you know, misspending of impact fees can result in some consequences. And, and then, there's a whole, you know, the money notwithstanding, the whole complexity of, you know, refunding it to who? To the people who paid it, to the people who are in the house now, the record, I mean, there's a lot of complexities to impact fees. There's no, there's no simple answer when it comes to spending impact fees. We know that.
Can you read it? You're our attorney. Can you read it so we can get a legal determination on what that thing says? Thank you.
If I could, still didn't answer my question.
You know, you can, I think our impact fees to acquire, to acquire, acquire land for recreation purposes, you know, for...
If I could just add, because they're really two separate issues. Number one would be the pickleball courts, which weren't measured, there wasn't pickleball at the time. And basically, so there's, that activity's not tied to the impact fees. However, use in the park and number of restrooms in the park certainly has increased from the time the fees were collected to now. So if you look at it in terms of two different subjects, if you will, the pickleball courts, I would agree with, with the attorney, probably wouldn't be eligible for impact fees, but would be probably appropriate for bed tax fees. Whereas the bathrooms, because of the additional users in the park, not just pickleball, but hiking and whatever use, inline hockey, all the other use, would be an improvement that I think, in my opinion, could be funded out of impact fees.
Okay, good. That's what I want to know. Councilman Shiska.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Once again, who's getting paid back? TAC's going to get paid back with bed tax and board tax, and, you know, I have to say that, that it's a return on investment for TAC. It's, it's, it's an, it's an investment that the city is going to get back plus some. So why not just take the whole thing out of TAC and then worry about what else is going on later?
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
I was just going to say that, that seems like a reasonable approach, Councilman Shiska, if you'd like to do.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Barry. Okay. We've run a little bit over. I noticed that clock is wrong. So I was going to ask you to come back at 3:30 by that clock, but I have to ask you to come back at 2:30 by that clock. And we'll start again. I apologize for running over. It'll give us an opportunity to stretch our legs, take care of a couple other things, and get back here in 15 minutes to start the voting meeting. It's being adjourned. Thank you.